I'd like to call this meeting to order and stage being held in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, that was properly noticed and has been posted and certified by the clerk. The fire exits are the door you came in and that door marked exit. Call Roper.
Mr. Hopper, Captain Smith. Here. Ms. Johnson. Here. Ms. Roberts. Here. Mr. Schindler. Here. Mr. Smith. Here. Mr. Young. Here. Mayor Francis. Here.
Please join me in a moment. We deploy the lead. I play play the lead.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. We have no confirmation tonight. Committee report, oh, we're gone.
Okay. We started strong over at the community center for the new year. We started with vaping class from the Center of Prevention and Recovery. So we had someone come down from the county and gave a very formative presentation on the dangers of vaping and also gave us resources that we have in the community center now for those that would like to quit. There are now resources popping up to actually help you quit vaping, the same as quitting smoking. It's an addiction. It requires a withdrawal process and it requires some help and there's nothing wrong with that. You do have that now if anyone is interested or if you're interested for a friend or a child. The discussion specifically talked about the dangers of vaping to a growing brain, meaning a teenager. Your brain's not fully formed until the age of 25 and they're seeing evidence of the impact of vaping on a growing brain and the problems that it would cause later on in life. So we are getting resources to help people quit, to educate parents if their children are vaping and to help them find an avenue of quitting, not just trading one addiction for another. So I'm very pleased that we started out so strong with a hot topic and we're going to keep touching on the hot topics for educational purposes so people can make an informed decision. We will be looking into another Narcan training that will be free to the public. We have several support groups for various struggles that we are going to be starting this year and the farmers, I'm sorry, the pop-up produce market, that's where we get foods and goods donated to us and we can share with the community. That will start in the spring. A lot of people have been asking where it is. It's winter, the crops are all in, they're out, so we're, it's a fallow time to get produce in. So that will start up in the spring and it will be every other Monday for your information since we've had so many questions about that. So thank you and that's it for now.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if anyone has seen a weird vehicle driving around the town. Okay? I want to let you know it's not the Google mapping vehicle, but it's actually a vehicle from StreetScan and they are here, actually they're finished now, but they are driving all over the town doing radar and infrared scanning and also pictures of the rightaways and the roads to evaluate them for us, to give us hard evidence of different, so they can rate the roads on how much maintenance they need and what needs to be done. So when they're all done, they're compiling the information, it's going to be given back to the DPW, Pat Mason, our engineer, and they'll be able to look at it and also tie it in with a GPS that we're looking, that we probably are going to have to do through the county tax department to update that. So it's all seamless coming through at some point, but it's going to give us some really good information so we can move forward and make some sound decisions on how roads and what roads are to be maintained at a certain level or repaved completely or patched. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just have recreation. Recreation Board meeting was actually last night. Sue Gord Leoni is the chairwoman for 2020. They formed all their necessary committees. They reviewed their movie night from back in December, which was very well attended and was a good success. They had quite a bit of conversation about summer rec program. They're making some more changes. The changes they made last year were very well accepted and everybody liked it, so they're changing it more so to that effect. And they also talked about pricing. The price will be going up next year. Most of the increase is due to the minimum wage is going up, even though as a seasonal operation, we get a year, you know, we get a year back, but still next year, minimum wage is going up some more, so that'll reflect the cost. Also talked about basketball. Basketball's going well so far. They approved paying the referees and the timers, which is always a good thing to keep the referees happy, you know. And had some conversation about the skate park. As you know, the skate park's been closed again because there's a couple of damning panels there and what we're going to start doing is looking into the cost of replacing each apparatus with concrete, similar concrete apparatus. They make them now out of concrete and I'm sure the concrete's more durable. What's there now is like a 25-year design and that skate park, that extreme park was built roughly 25 years ago, so the technology is probably a lot better and we're going to start looking into, because it's quite costly to replace those panels. And also had a gentleman there by the name of Sean O'Malley. He's looking to start a new, very informal summer girls, summer basketball league and he's probably going to do it similar to the way the gentleman Aldo Caprio runs the skate park or street skating, where it's actually, he'll be running it, but it'll be run under the auspices of the Recreation Commission, so that's a good thing, you know. Anytime we can add more activities for youngsters, that's a good thing. And that's it.
When the skate park gets up and going again, is there any way, do you have any security cameras over there?
Well, the concrete should answer a lot of them.
We do have a camera. We do have a camera over there?
That's all you wear over there.
No, don't tell me where. I have a mask on.
Don't even ask.
Another thing that came up on that end, okay, and I've already mentioned it to.
But just to be proactive, to watch over it.
There are other municipalities that have a skate park where they have camera and they also have a intercom.
Mm-hmm.
So when the police see something.
Right.
They make an announcement, you know.
We'll be there in two minutes.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're dispatching someone over to the skate park and I thought that was a good idea, which is why I passed it on, so.
Okay, good.
You know, it's another stump thing to look into, but, you know, like I said, I think the big thing is the concrete. What they make now is different, much more durable.
Okay, good. But we also have a lot of activity back there.
We do.
That we can be more vigilant.
Right. I'll start with the Chamber of Commerce. Our Sussex County Chamber Council for September 17th, our next meeting is February 14th. Their last name is Daniel Fenn, fellow candidate for the D.C. Dyna. There's a lot going on at county level in addition to us having stuff at the local level. Friday, February 7th, the County Chamber Master Grade Gala at Skyview Club. Tuesday, February 11th, there's the DVD breakfast for February. That's the one I was going to be hosting at Lafayette House. Ron and I went to that. That's fun. The Wednesday, March 4th, in the evening at 5:00 PM, there's a young professionals speed metering that's being hosted. The location has yet to be determined. Further on in April, April 9th is when the Chamber Business Expo, that's the big expedition we have up Crystal Springs every year. That's going to be Thursday, April 9th. And looking ahead even further, Sussex County Day, the date has been set up at the Fairground for September 10th. I'd like to have some of our local chefs participate in the festivities up there and continue to be, so we can, like Altestin said, to come last year and eat and brook. But now since we have the date early this year, I hope you all know this year, I think anybody who knows, our master chef, I'd like to see him come to there. In addition to that, one of our members is actually hosting an Outsmart the Scammers seminar at the Lewis Child's Library and that is coming up this January 23rd at 6:30 PM. So if you're interested in anything about how to scammer, it's epidemic. Our phones have been going off, the dates are every day, it is a real problem. But he's got some wonderful ideas on how to outsmart. So I'll do that seminar in January, in the library, welcome to have you. Switch gears, I went to the Sussex, the Solid Race Advisory Committee last night for the first time. It's the Sussex County Advisor Committee to the Solid Race Committee, not the F. Got a whole bunch of dates for the 20-point schedule. I'll be posting those online, but if you found that the Sussex County Department website, let's note that the household hazard space days are June 6th and November 7th this year. Electronics inside the building there, four of them, March 28th, May 16th, July 25th, and October 17th. And there's a lot more going on over there. That's it. The other?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. In reference to the vaping that Nora talked about, it's really, really important that we get that word out. I really want to have one soon. I think it was so comprehensive. I learned stuff that I never knew before and I think, not just for the kids, but I think the adults should go, so we can recognize and help counsel our children, our grandchildren, and anybody who will listen, the danger. It was a really, really good presentation. It's only about a half an hour, they don't bore you to death, but anybody who has kids, even if they're young, you know, in middle school, is vaping a lot, more than we'd like to admit. High school, forget it, everybody's vaping. But I think the more that the parents and the grandparents know about this, the more knowledge we have, the healthier we're going to be. All right. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to open it to public for public comment. Second. All in favor? All right. Welcome public. Any public? No one up?
How's the River Sticks project coming along? Because it seems like for three years it's been in the planning stage.
Yes.
And when are they going to start digging?
We hopefully, you mean the River Sticks redevelopment?
No, nothing redevelopment.
The beautification.
The beautification.
The street skate?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ron's intrigued, you know that.
That, we're right now, we're, we are interacting with the DEP. The contractor that originally got that contract went out of business. So the DEP has not released us yet to go to the next successful bidder. There's several bids on that. By local contract, public contract law, when that happens, you can go to the next bidder. In this case, we can't automatically do it because it's a DEP project, it could be a funded project. Now, we have to have their approval to go to the next contractor and they have yet to give that to us. Once that's done, you know, we'd award the contract and have the startup meeting and start the process all over to put a bucket in the ground, but we can't get, we get the letter to proceed, what they call the letter to proceed from the DEP, we can't do anything with it.
How long have you been waiting?
A long time.
Forever.
Six months. Six months.
And do we have, do we have plans already that can be used by?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. We have a schedule ready.
We have plans, specs, specifications, bill materials, performance bonds, everything's ready to go. It's just that when you have a contractor that just leaves town, particularly with any federal state-funded project, that is a bureaucracy which you don't want to leave, but to, you just can't automatically appoint that next contractor. They have to approve that and they have to make sure that we're releasing that other contractor properly. They have to do that and give us the okay to go to the next one. When we get that green light, we're going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Bullock, I have a point. We all know that our town is animal lovers, so I'd like to clear up a few things that I think question. So according to our ACO, Deanna, the Backon Shelter is accepting donations through a 501(c)(3) called Rescue Hearts. So they collected, from the latest numbers, $2,123 that was collected through Rescue Hearts. So I'm wondering, does Rescue Hearts appears to be asking for cash donations, it's under Deanna's name and under her address. People are a little confused between where Rescue Hearts is and she keeps going, she's accepting donations for the shelter and then she put the slash Rescue Hearts. So it would appear that we have a department head and a municipal employee who's asking for cash donations for her employer, which is the municipal government, for capital equipment. So are we to the public to surmise that there isn't enough money because if you look at the list of things that she's asking, and I'm not talking about the toys or whatever, there seems to be a shed that was already, she already collected money for in 2017. Now we have another shed that she's asking for money for in 2019. Are we having two sheds? Where are the sheds if Rescue Hearts is in Ledgewood? People are confused. So I was hoping you might clear up the confusion.
There's one shed up there if you wanted to have another one.
Okay.
Let's be clear, Rescue Hearts is not a municipal government entity, correct? Right? If someone wants to donate money to the shelter, they can donate money to the town, it will be accepted and it will be put in a budget item for the shelter.
But it's going to a 501(c)(3) that's in her name and her address.
Which is not.
So it could be confusing to the people who are trying to donate because there's a donation on Amazon that's also listed for the shelter and there's a donation for a 501(c)(3) that's Rescue Hearts, that's in our ACO's name at her address.
Right. Those are not donations to the municipality and we'll look into the other.
Well, she's saying they're donations to the shelter, so that's where the confusion's coming in and it seems to be crossing each other. If you could clear that up, we would appreciate it.
They're not donations to the municipality and we're looking.
Thank you very much.
Next up. Anybody? No one?
We can bring it back.
Second. All in favor? All right. We're back. Okay. Approval of minutes, we have three here. So the first is, I want to send a motion on minutes of the regular meeting on December 18th, 2019.
I'll move it.
Second.
Call Roper.
Ms. Johnson. Upstaying?
No.
Well, she's upstaying. She's just saying I still have to call her name. Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Upstaying.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Minutes of the reorganization meeting on January 2nd, 2020.
So, however, I do have two very small corrections to those. R2020-21, there was a X left off, whoever motioned it, which was myself, and R2020-23 on the PBA contract, we voted to table it.
Table it, yes.
Call me. You did almost say something too much. Anything else?
Is that correct? With them corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
So move it with, so with John's corrections?
Yeah. 2021 and 2020-21.
All right. Ms. Johnson. Yes. Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Minutes on Hudson Avenue, their extension, public hearing on January 8th, 2020. I'll move it. Second. Roper.
Ms. Johnson. Yes. Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Yes. Approval of the bill.
Does anyone need anything else besides myself? Mayor, I'll move the bill list with the exception of 19-02265.
Second.
Dash 02365.
Roper.
Ms. Johnson. Yes. Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I'll move 19-02365.
Second. Roper.
Ms. Johnson. I'm here.
You want that John couldn't vote on?
I got it. I'm sorry. Apologize. Yes. Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So move a consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? All right. A vote. A thing. Ordinance is, introduction of ordinance is ordinance 2020-01 Commercial Tour Billing Amendment in accordance with the V.A.C.K. on Conyers Sussex, modifying section 1869F of the revised general ordinance of the V.A.C.K.
Mayor, I'm going to ask that the council entertain a motion to table that. This is a requested language change that came from the discussion that was held when you changed ordinance 1869. At the time, the engineer and I realized that the ordinance identifying commercial properties, that did not take into account commercial properties with multiple buildings on it. The engineer wanted to insert language to make sure that each building on a commercial property had its own meter.
Okay.
The, this change is correct, but the reference is the section F and when we reorganize the ordinance, it's now changes language in section D. So rather than trying to change it on the fly tonight, I would suggest that we table it. I'll reorganize it with the way the new ordinance is laid out and it'll come back to you at the next meeting, but it'll be 9D with essentially the same wording.
Can we make it 9D now with introduction?
Well, if he has to change it to something else, it might be a waste of time.
You can, but. Is it a numerical thing or actual wording?
There's going to be a couple of words that are going to change the wording, so we don't have to do this again and because it's not urgent, it's up to you. I mean, I could fix it right now, but I'd rather, I'd rather put it back in front of you coming in 9D and make the language.
Make your time to do it right.
Well, I had a question for you on that.
Sure.
So maybe this will answer that. In the ordinance, you have commercial properties that are, some commercial properties that are metered because they have water and then you have some commercial property that are lap rates and then their water is metered and then you have other, you have other properties that are lap rate and don't have water. So you have, the ones that don't have water, you're going to be installing a sewer meter or a water meter? Is that what you have to work on with the wording?
No.
Okay.
That's a good question, but this change that was brought up was only to address the situation where a building, where there's two commercial buildings on one property.
Okay.
And if you only had one meter, then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be allocated properly between the two buildings. So the engineer wanted to make sure that each commercial building, it right now says "commercial properties." The engineer wanted to make sure that each commercial building had a water meter.
Okay.
So the question of how you're going to build the commercial properties that are not on public water.
Correct.
That's a good question, but you have to ask the engineer. I don't know.
Okay. But could we do that when we do this? Get that on a shot or is it?
Yeah, sure. If the answer's readily available, yes, of course.
Okay.
I'll cover that with John, make sure he's alive. If the language's not right, I'm rushing it.
Rushing, yeah.
Yeah. I'll bring it up and I'll, when I get a response, I'll copy you on it.
Okay.
Motion to table. I'll move table. Second. All in favor? All right. A vote. A thing. Done. Ordinance 2020-02, no parking on Ethel Road. An ordinance demanding section 231-16 entitled Parking to add a new parking zone on a portion of Ethel Road.
Can I ask what to do?
So. People are parking on the road you can't get through.
Yeah, in your ordinances, you risk, in the schedule, you risk perhaps 20 or 25 roads in the borough that either have no parking at any time and generally that comes from the engineer, the police, the DPW with flowing recommendations. And sometimes they're also trying, right? Can't park overnight or can't park at certain times. But this is, this is one that was recommended to us, no parking anytime. I don't remember where the recommendation came from. Pretty sure it was from the police, but I'm not sure.
We passed this last year and now we're just editing it.
Right, so what you did. So what you did is you.
Fixing it when we passed it.
Correct. You did pass this last year, you passed it already, but when you passed it, you put it in the ordinance section for no parking certain times of the day and it confused the code company and all we're doing is moving it to no parking anytime, just to get the right.
So move it. Second. All good. All right. Vote. We have one else thing? Okay. Thank you. All right. There's no final hearing. Resolution, this PBA contract I have on here. Like to table it. Second, motion to table. Second. Roper.
Ms. Johnson. Yes. Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Young.
Yes. We're still working on that. We're, I think we're getting, we're doing pretty good actually. We have our challenges, but I think we're doing pretty good. Resolution 2020-29, approval with Borough Holiday. I'll move it. Second. Roper.
Ms. Johnson. Yes. Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-30, outside lien redemption, block 11008, block 8, and block 40108, block 4. Roper. Roper.
Ms. Johnson. Yeah. Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-31, outside lien redemption, block 40203, block 14. Roper. John, you want to explain what a lien redemption is to us?
Sure.
Jen, for Jen. My name is for Jen.
Well, sometimes the public needs to hear that. No problem at all.
So the tax lien program, it's somewhat complicated, but the simplified version of it is that if municipal taxes or water sewer charges are unpaid for one year, then the tax collector lists them for public sale and that's the list you see come out on, posted on the door and comes out in the newspaper. For the properties that are interesting to outside investors, they come in and buy a lien against that property. The upside for the municipality is that we then get the money to put in our budget. Sometimes properties don't sell and then that's a different category, but the person, Joe Smith comes in, he buys a lien on property A, he holds it for two years, collects interest, but now property A wants to redeem it. They have the money, they want to pay off the taxes. In order that there be no casual, I'd say no funny business between the lien holder and the property owner, the transactions are required to go through the town. So if the person who wants to pay off the lien comes in, pays the town. So if the person who wants to pay off the lien comes in, pays the town.
Okay.
Then we pay the lien holder.
So this is, this the release of that money to the lien holder?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But because it's cutting a check and it's outside the normal course, then all these from the council to be paid.
That makes sense. All right, thank you.
I'll roll.
Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Resolution 2020-32 Change Order, send for line painting for Durbin Flora Road Taping. I'll move. Second. I'll roll.
Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
Resolution 2020-33 Change Order, Jay Fletcher, Bremer &amp; Son for Durbin Flora Road Taping. I'll move. Second. I'll roll.
Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-34 Change Order, Telcon, New York for Durbin Flora Road Taping. I'll move. Second. I'll roll.
Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Same.
Mr. Young.
Yeah.
Whole business. New business. On the new business, I want to talk about, again, like I usually do talk about the lake, but we're in the process now, and the state has offered what they're now calling grants, but we have to be on the hook for part of that grant. And it looks like it's 30%, but we can meet that 30% either in kind or cash, and so.
Like, is this regarding proposals for the cyanobacteria?
Proposals for the cyanobacteria, yes. And so, as everyone knows, I'm focused on Crescent Cove, and I have an annual treatment for that, and that proposal is $253,000 total. And so the state will do two-thirds of that, and we have to make up the other two-thirds, or $80,000 thereabouts. But we can do that in kind, that means we can pay the electric, we can, we can do any and all work for a DPW and charge that towards, towards the grant. So what I'd like to do is get the council guidance or approval on that to move forward with it. If the council decides not to do it, then I won't submit the grant. But I think that, I think we can figure out a way to do the in-kind with at least a minimal amount of capital money on it, instead of coming out of our capital budget. And so I'd at least like to split the difference, and I think we can do that one more. But the fact of the matter is that the council has to approve that, or I can't proceed forward with it. Right?
Right.
Okay.
You've got a two-week deadline, deadline.
The deadline is January, they increased it, it was last Tuesday.
Yesterday, I thought it was yesterday.
Yeah, it was, but now they've, they've gone to January 20th. So I, I mean, I have all the proposals, and I'll certainly share them when anybody wants to see them, but it's specific.
I think it's very important that, that we look at Crescent Cove. I mean, we're specifically, your proposals are just for Crescent Cove, and we see that the state, and even some of the other entities around the lake are not moving forward as quickly as you might, to be honest, and you're really moving in the right direction. The real question that I have is, you know, who owns the lake? And, you know, if we put money into it, we get some ownership of the lake, you know, and, and that's always been a rug. Where do you draw the line? And, and I know we participate in the lake, and we need to help out, but the question is, you know, personally, I'm feeling like the rug got pulled out from us in the sense of what was originally said when the governor came down and said, hey, here's all this money, and we're gonna, anyone apply for a grant, and we'll help you out, and now all of a sudden, it's one-third, two-thirds to one-third. And, you know, I, I really have no problem in doing it in kind, okay? If they need an area to put a compressor, if that's what's happening, or some power usage, electric usage or whatever, I'm not sure if I support straight in kind cash, okay? Money. I have to be sold on that a little more, even though I, I support the project, and I support trying to do something for Crescent Cove. We, we all know, even before the cyanobacteria issue, we knew, you know, we've known for years that it's been a problem. And I think this proposal, your proposals, I think will even help that issue before, you know, the, the lack of movement of water and everything, and just help the, the health of that area of the lake. So I do support the proposals.
More comment? Opinion? Help with that.
I need to see more. Okay.
Proposals to hear from. I have the, the annual aeration proposal for Crescent Cove with aeration and biological treatment. That's the hydroxy. You know, biological treatment, it's not chemical. It's not pesticide, okay? It's a biological treatment that, that is a project treatment, and what you do, you counteract the cyanobacteria with good bacteria, like Zulplankin and others. And it's managed, actually, Rutgers University has looked at it, and, and they approved it. We have a letter of approval, Rutgers University, biology on this methodology. It's not used much in New Jersey, it's used a lot in the Midwest, the, the treatment with bacteria, simply because New Jersey would rather put the columns in the water and treat it with lime or whatever to precipitate out. This actually is a biological treatment that counteracts the bacteria, and it prevents, it actually prevents the cyanobacteria from multiplying as fast as they would likely, where you don't kill them, the cyanobacteria. You just don't let them, you just don't let them multiply exponentially as much as they do. Because if you kill cyanobacteria, they die, they create a cyanotoxin, and they kill anything in the water. So you can't kill cyanobacteria. You could, but it's dangerous. So what you do is you counteract that with good bacteria. The good bacteria outcompete them to food, and they kind of absorb them. A little oversimplified, to kind of compound that in a double, yes, and double. Yeah. And so Crescent Cove, I'll make a copy of it, but the Crescent Cove will have like 38 publics, and it'll have a bubbler curtain under the grid to prevent bad stuff from coming in, and keep the good stuff in the 90-acre code.
So I think maybe along the lines of what Rich is asking. I don't, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with it. Of course, the lake is really important to, to the borough. My question is, without sounding like, why, why is it on us, the state lake?
Yes.
Why is the state not treating the lake? Why are they leaving us out?
You should be at some of the meetings I go to, to tell you the truth, and, and I'm getting ready now, I promised, I promised news media to give interviews, because I am very vocal about that lake. Locally and statewide, in Vacan and France. And sometimes I have to be very careful on how I give my opinion, whether it's a very strong opinion on how the lake has failed because of, because of the state and how they manage it.
Right. At what point does it stop becoming our responsibility? So now it's Crescent Cove.
We're out in a pack.
But then what happens when we go out to the other code and the other places? Then all of a sudden, we're treating it, we're, you understand what I'm saying?
That's why, that's why this proposal is very specific to Crescent Cove, very specific. It's 90 acres, it has a very narrow entrance and exit, we can really control it, there are some performance requirements in this to make sure that it passes all the tests. If it doesn't pass the test, we don't pay. But you can't, you can't do this right now, in, in, in the real world, we can't do it without investing some money, because they won't let us. Our option is to say, no, we're not going to do anything, and then when people come and talk about their quality of life or our lake, they say, well, what, what did the, what did the local government do about it? What did you try to do about it? I'm trying to minimize our costs by doing in-kind, so it won't be $80,000 probably be, if there is some cash, we'll, we'll try to minimize that as much as we can. My, my quick math would be probably $20,000 or $30,000 if I couldn't do it for that, and, you know, so if we fix a number, we can, or we can say, no, we don't own the lake, don't do anything, I'll take that guidance, and the council, it's not going to stop me talking about it, it will just give me directions on how I commit borough funds. It's not going to change my mind about the lake when I odor, it's not going to change what I have to say about the lake, or how it's being managed. What it will do is will give me guidance and direction on how I can commit borough resources to address the problem of Crescent Cove. We did that with the sewer, sewer line, quite frankly, it's being done because of the lake. Now, I also have to tell you that under this grant program, Phase 2, I submitted a grant for the sewer line. And so if you follow what I'm doing, that will pay 66% of it, not 50%. So I'm going to hold the state to what they ask us to do, and I'm going to give them a water resource runoff type grant that affects what runs into the lake, meaning that thing. And so I have a grant under that, under that, and that will, that will override the 50% grant, infrastructure loan. So there's a lot going on, but, but we need to understand, before I go much further on behalf of the borough resources, I need direction on what you think we need to do. If it's a number, pick a number, if it's, if it's an effort, not, but, you know, I'm not going to study it to death, I already have, and the simple question is, should we, should we commit borough resources to make Crescent Cove better? And that's a yes or no, and then if it's a yes, how much? And I'm trying to break it down as fundamentally as I can, because we have a choice to make as a governing body. We have a choice in principle, and then we have a choice in how we manage the resources. There's basically three different questions, but this point, and I'm not going to have a problem with doing this, but we have a limit on our resources that we're going to spend. I think that's my word, break it down, please.
Mayor, you might help afford a little bit, if you can illustrate the process a bit. You're in the mode now of sending proposals to the state.
Yes.
Is there any guarantee at the state level that these even get accepted?
No.
Where are you in the process?
I would be surprised if they accept it. But that can't, that cannot and must not stop us from giving them proposals that have known methodology and technology to fix the problem, because it's been done in other lakes, it's been done in Lake Carmine in Ramon, it's been done in Lake Inheritage in, in, down by Harrisburg, I can give you 20 different lakes, where different methodologies have been used, sometimes simply with the bubblers, sometimes with a combination of the two. But the combination of the two will really fix an area of the lake that's really, it is Crescent Cove, the numbers on it, when they check, it's supposed to be 20,000, or billion or something on the bacteria, Crescent Cove regularly goes up to 80, 90, 100, so it's really, it's really a troubled part of the lake in our town. And so I, I kind of take that personally, and we have, we have some responsibilities, we have lakefront people that pay a lot, a lot of taxes. We're proportionally higher, because their property now is very valuable, but what happens to that property is they can't use the lake. What, what if they come to us and say, you haven't done much except complained to the state, and now I can't use the lake, so tell me about the value of my lake fund, hypothetically? And so, and so if you're spending that kind of money, both purchasing properties and to pay the taxes, I understand that, that formula, but if one of them pieces of the formula drops off, you know, how do you answer that? You can't say, well, we didn't think it was worth putting a couple bucks into there, so, you know, tough. I, I'm not there, I will not, I will not do that. So we're, we're kind of on the spot, you know, I'm, I'm really not happy with the state for doing that to us, but I'm going to address that in other venues, I will. But right now, we as a governing body have to make a decision on how we move forward. That's kind of where we're at, I don't know how else to put it.
Mayor, going back to the concept, is, is it reasonable to say that there may be even further decision points that this board would have the opportunity to do to approve funding, even after this proposal's gone, the state has vetted it, it's gone through its process, and they're ready to award or not? Are there other opportunities that the board would have to look at at that particular time? This is to get you going into the process, knowing DEP as well as we do, there's nothing straightforward with that.
Not really, they lie a lot.
They do.
So anyhow, that's on the record. That is on the record, I don't shake your head, John, I'm telling the gods on the truth. I can't be more direct.
I know, but you're asking them for $280,000.
I don't care. They, now, the question after the state is, how much do you think the lake could worth? How do you value our lake? And unless, unless I commit some effort to show them stuff, they're going to say, well, the towns don't care, why should we? I'm not going to give them an opportunity to say, well, the towns aren't putting any effort or energy into this, and maybe we won't either much. I would challenge them, and I'll challenge them by saying, we really care, and this is how much we care. Now, truth of a grant, I can go through all this trouble, we can say, yeah, you can, you can't spend any more than $50,000. You can go through all that, I can submit the grant, I can get the grant, but I don't have to, I don't have to, I don't have to accept it. And so we sign under that line, and this council says, yep, but it'll come back to us. It'll come back to us to expend that money again, but I don't want to waste the time in between, that's why I'm bringing it here now, in the open, in public. And I think that's the appropriate way to do this, so we give a clear message to our legislators in the state, what we think about our lake, and how much we value it or not, what the problem we have with them, so the dialogue, you know, we're being recorded, and I don't care if you play it back anywhere, tell them the truth. And so that's kind of the spot that the DEP has put us in, and we have to decide what we want to do with that. It would be nice if we say, your lake, fix it, they're saying, yeah, we don't, we're not going to make it that easy, that's what's happening.
You know, their opinion is that we're the ones that are killing the lake, sort of, particularly.
Well, the director said that.
Since they want, we have the problem, they can't handle that. At some point in time, we have to hold our end of the bargain, at some point, they have to hold their end of the bargain.
That's right. And so where we're at, if, if, should we say, should we put a parameter around it and say, okay, I'll move forward with it, it's going to come back here before we sign anything.
It has to.
It has to.
This is, this is, the vote that you're getting tonight is on, on expending energy to go ahead and do it, but the council absolutely could not find itself to.
Yes, but I have to write some numbers on a piece of paper, on a cover sheet, and it says, how much you asking for in the grant, and how you're going to break it down. And I'm not going to ask them a question unless I speak to my council and give me some guidance on what do you think that number should be? Otherwise, I'm wasting my time, because, because they'll automatically reject it if you don't fill in all the blanks. And by the way, the instruction sheet for this grant is 45 pages long, I'd be more than happy to share it with you, because I had a headache for two days trying to figure it out. So that's kind of where we're at, it is very detailed, I can give everybody a copy of this, with no problem, and that will keep you on board with what we're doing, any complexity of it.
But you didn't answer on that number tonight.
Well, I want some guidance on it, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I, 40,000 or 50,000 out of the capital budget is, is not a gigantic number.
You can afford that.
Uh?
You can afford that.
Yes.
Yes, you can, because it's more than just the lakefront property, there's a lot of people that belong to Crescent Cove Beach Club, that.
If it's for Crescent Cove.
This is more than just.
If this is for Crescent.
More than just 35, 40 homes that have lakefront property. A lot of people were angry that they could not use their beach last year.
So this is a, this is a first step forward. If this model worked in Crescent Cove, it would work in any code. Well, we, we take a step at a time.
If it works.
If it works.
Crescent Cove might turn into the Byron Bay.
Wouldn't be such a bad thing.
Restaurants would like it.
Yeah, eventually, but really approach the people that want to do letter writing and fundraising for it, so I don't know where this is going to go. Where, where I'm at, though, is I got to make a commitment, and I, and I will give you the worst case. I'll always give you the worst case, hoping that we can make it better, with creativity, more effort, and appeal to people to help with it. But if we're on our own with this, then, then I just gave you the worst-case scenario.
Worst-case is all of it?
For this?
The whole 253.
Yes.
That's the worst case.
Well, well, the, the, the one-third of that is the worst case. 253, the sixth number, that's what it's going to cost for this project.
But if they would get the grant altogether?
No, we're done. They, they take it as a third, not like, you know, if they, if they reject it, I'll, you know, I'm going to a AKB summit, Tuesday, the 27th, and that's all the big shots in the state are going to, I don't know why the hell I'm invited, but, but I'll say my piece, and it's all the people that deal with AKB. So, so people deal with it, deal with it, study it, and study it, and I have been known And I have been known to say, study or not, do something. This is a mitigation proposal. There's no study here. This is, and, and the performance on this is that after a period of time, probably two or three weeks, the water will pass all the state standards in Crescent Cove. Done studying. The study says we got a problem, done. And we've studied our lake to death. Our lake is a cash cow for study. We've known about these movement algae and oxygen depletion equation for the past 15 years or more. And all we do is study. But where I'm at is, is submitting a proposal to fix it. That's where we're at. So we have skin in the game because it's our town and it affects the economy of our town. And if we can do that with that model, then, so, you know, and if you're, if you're, if you're in Crescent Cove and you live there, then you're going to benefit from it. If the town benefits overall, so if Crescent Cove goes bad again, we're going to have businesses out of business. So it's, it's just more, it's just, it's more complex than, oh, what you're doing is, how does I create this? Well, we're not. We're doing it for anybody who wants to use Crescent Cove. And so if it's clean code, then, then it proves. And so if that works, then, you know, we look at other codes. But other codes that don't have this problem, that Crescent Cove has in, in concentration. You know, it comes, it goes, Crescent Cove never went down. You know, the other where there's some current, where there's some current, yeah, it comes, it's here today, next week it's gone. Crescent Cove was above the 20,000 from day one and it was above the 20,000 on the last day, day 20. The other code weren't. The code went up, they go down because there's circulation. Remember, Crescent Cove is like a 90-acre lake. The mouth of it is the bridge, that's it. So I, I, you know, like I said, I'll, I'll give this to everybody, but we need some guidance. What are we going to do?
I think that, you know, one of the things we have to look at, the, the economics of the whole project and how it radiates from just Crescent Cove. Because we do have the redevelopment area that's flowing right down to the bridge and across if something happens. You know, so this area is really critical to our town. And I think that personally, I, I think the state's not going to go for this. So we're going to really get a chance to, you know, say yay or nay again. And, but as it stands right now, I think let's call their bluff and let's, I think let you put the money in and, and do it. I would also, you know, I mean, I'd like to hear from the public too. Email me, all right, any of us, and just give us your opinion, please, because that's another big thing. You know, we want to understand, but in my eyes, I look at our town and it's very much wrapped around the lake. So I think this is something good that we need to move on.
So we're not bound by anything?
No. I just need some guidance.
Okay.
Because if, 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 if. They blink curve. I have to say, I got to bring it to my council now and whatever the final number is.
You have nothing in front of you that you can award tonight anyway? There's no official bid here, no official.
This is like a straw.
I know.
I don't want to come back and you say, well, you never told us about it.
No, no, I, I was just saying, I'm just a type A, I have everything in front of me.
Yeah.
So. Let's be clearer than that, though, because I, I don't think, Mr. Chin, I don't think it's like a straw vote.
Okay.
A straw vote is, you know, that you're going to buy a truck in June and, you know, what does everybody think about that? Oh, yeah, we're going to buy it and it shows up out here and then you decide what you're going to pay for it, right? That's a straw vote, right? Your voting tonight authorized the mayor to file the grant application. In the grant application, it says, if you accept all the conditions and decide to go forward with this project, the town is going to commit X amount of dollars, okay? That is going to come up on as an agenda item.
Yep.
With something certified by the CFO that the funds are available, which is going to say, what, you know, line item is coming out of.
Yep.
And it's going to be a new vote. And the, the reason I'm, you know, the way they seem to go with the government, this could come up again in two months or it could come up next year with, you know, with not even, you know, different, it could be new members on the council, right? So, you know, I think, you know, I think everything the mayor says about the effort, you know, the going forward, you know, the, the making the point with the state and the DEP, the town's commitment to the lake, all those things are true and that's what you're voting on. You're voting on the grant application and the effort that the mayor and the administration is going to put in. But, but you are not bound when this comes up as a, let's pay this dollar.
It'll come up and if it does come up and there's a dollar value, I have to, we have to certify that the funds are available.
I appreciate the clarification, but let's file. I'm going to say even 80 grand if it's there before it's not available for the lake.
I haven't, I'm sitting here listening to everybody and I'm thinking, and I'll be perfectly frank, I'm a little hesitant to spend taxpayer money on the lake. However, I am very familiar with Crescent Cove. And besides Crescent Cove Beach, there's probably 100 to 125 votes that are kept in there. And since we're committing without committing, I kind of feel, yeah, let's, let's.
File and see what happens.
Let's file and make the state put their feet, put their feet to the fire.
And then go through. Okay, Mike.
And meanwhile, I'll make sure that a copy of this gets in everybody's mind. This proposal, I'll give out tonight.
45 pages.
No, no, that's the instruction. The proposal, by the way.
That's the instruction, the instructions that we're 45.
Yes. And the kicker with this is, absolutely, this work, I had such a headache working with the state tax surveying. So it's been, it's, it's a little stressful because you put in back and forth, they don't answer their phone and they do. Then you get the other person and you got to hand it off. But, but the proposal, the proposal can only be 10 pages. That's it. And it takes 45 pages to tell you all. All right, so I have some guidance now and, and I appreciate that. But, you know, for, for, for the public, if you have questions, call me. I can talk about our lake forever, almost as long as I can talk about our town. But it's really been an adventure, I have to tell you. This has been a quest for the past year and a half. And I was so unhappy with how our lake was being managed with this proposal. It's from a company in Michigan. Because I, I got someone totally not under the influence of local stuff, whatever that is. So this proposal is from Everglue Lake and they're out of Michigan. They do a lot of work in the Midwest, they do a lot of work around the Great Lakes. They're beginning to do some work down in Florida, but that's a whole nother thing. But they do a lot of work in the Northeast. And we're not the only ones with this problem. We're about the only lake that hasn't been managed the way I think it should have been. So it's going to get out of control really quick. And that's not going to be very pleasant for us if, if we have another year like last year. That being said. Go ahead.
I don't know if any of you guys saw, Sparta recently passed an ordinance. They're calling it the zombie ordinance, it has to do with foreclosed property and bank-owned property. I have a copy.
Sure, as a matter of fact, I just, I just started a foreclosed, a current foreclosed.
Yes, I know. Well, that's when you said that, I was like, ooh.
That will be available to everybody if you go on my desk right now, it'll give you the state definition of abandoned property.
So the, the way that Sparta defined it, that the, the fines and the fees actually went up. The state increased all of the fees and the fines. So it's like $500 to register the property.
Yep.
The first year that it is not sold, it's when a bank-owned property, it's $1,500 fines to the bank company and then $2,500 and then $5,000.
It's not a fine, it's a fee.
It's a fee to the bank. So I just wanted to, I don't know if I'm allowed to do this in the business, I have no idea.
Sure, can.
Okay. So that was, I just, I thought that we'd be putting together that foreclosure list and this was kind of on my radar anyway.
What you're going to see also is, pretty soon, actually, we have a lot of stuff going on, such as this. You're going to see, we're going to revisit our Airbnb ordinance and we're going to visit our septic maintenance ordinance. So I, sometime in the first quarter, I'd like to get that done, but that's, we're going to be busy with that stuff. I'm looking at Jersey City's ordinance now, I'm reading that.
The septic?
Airbnb.
Oh, Airbnb.
Yeah, they, they were pretty creative with it.
There was another one recently, short-term rental Airbnb that just passed too. I can't remember where though.
There's a town in New Mexico, I've been talking, a little town in New Mexico, I'm talking to.
I actually meet you. Vernon, Vernon would work there.
Jefferson, Vernon.
Yeah, so we'll be addressing that.
While you're doing that septic ordinance, that means that you would have to go through and figure out who's connected to septic and everything else?
Yep.
Might be a good time to look at all those deferments on the sewer.
Yeah, we, we can look at that. But, you know, part of my strategy on septic, I'm going to put a lot, I'm going to put a lot of pressure on, on the people who pump the septic.
Oh, well, yeah, but I mean, if you have somebody in a sewer area that should be attached to, connected to a sewer.
We'll know that. We'll know that because we'll, we'll start to put together a, a.
A list.
We'll put a GPS, we'll, we'll mark it on the map. Right, any more question? What should we do?
What should we do?
Yeah. Oh, yes, I need to mostly go into executive session, we had to talk about some.
Executive for litigation matter, concerned personnel.
Yes.
No formal action.
I'll, I'll make that move.
Second. I'll leave. Bye. We're in executive session, so thank you for coming.